I have a challenge. We need to be in there for you.
Yeah. Well, I tried to make a rep for me.
I'm having my dinner right now.
There's dessert.
Yeah, that's my dessert. I'm good, okay. I'm live, Daniel. Are we live? All right. Folks, we're live.
I think our connection is bad.
Okay, perfect.
My plug on this side. And well, that there, I mean, it's kind of...
I guess you call it that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would rise and recite the pledge with us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have roll call, please?
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Mayor Bowman.
Present, thank you. We do have a quorum. We have Alderman Franklin attending by Zoom and City Attorney Mauer also attending by Zoom. We have a proclamation tonight, but I don't see anyone here yet. I'm going to go ahead and just move down on the agenda if that's okay with the board. And if they arrive, we'll do the proclamation then because they certainly deserve one. Public participation. Mr. Ratliff, did we have any agenda request forms?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Moving on then to the approval of the minutes. At this point, I would ask you to please silence your cell phones if you haven't already done so. First thing on the agenda is the minutes of the Board of Aldermen, the regular meeting of August the 16th. They were printed in your packet.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Milner, all in favor of approving the minutes of the Board of Aldermen regular meeting August 16th.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. And then the minutes of the work session of August the 16th also were available in your packet.
I have a motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Reese, all in favor of approving those minutes.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the work session August 16th do stand approved. Moving on then to Council Bill 73. Attorney Mauer, you are muted.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Trying to, trying to make this work. It's a little bit lost on me. Give me one second. I apologize.
No apology needed. Take your time.
It's got the camera backed around. I don't know how to fix it. Well, I'll just go on without it. My apologies.
That's okay. It's Council Bill 73.
Council Bill 73 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen, the City of Harrisville, Missouri, approving the appointment of Kevin Wood to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Wood is in the audience. He's a very familiar face to us, having been a former mayor and former alderman and former member of Planning and Zoning Commission for many years. Mr. Virgil Butler, who is seated on the Planning and Zoning Commission, has resigned his seat due to family issues, and so I would like to bring the appointment of Kevin Wood to fill that seat. And I would just certainly ask for approval of the board.
I make a motion to approve.
Snuck in it.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from, it was a tie between Alderman Zaring and Alderman Davidson, so Alderman Davidson is referring to Alderman Zary. So the first is from Alderman Milner and the second is from Alderman Zaring. May I have roll call, please?
Alderman Mills. Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Wood is in the audience. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Did you have anything you wanted to say to the board?
Not at all, but thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. We appreciate you. Moving on then, Council Bill 74. I'm sorry.
Council Bill 73.
Do back up. Council Bill 73 is approved as Resolution R 038 for the record. Council Bill 74.
Council Bill 74 is an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen, the City of Harrisville, establishing a new municipal division bank account for the receipts and dispersals of Show Me Courts program by the Harrisville Municipal Court, first year of Council Bill 074.
Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This is a housekeeping issue. As you'll recall, there was another resolution brought to you adopting some of the other covenants of adopting Show Me Courts for the, at the application for moving forward for the municipal court of the 17th Judicial Circuit. One of the pieces we missed when we realized that going through that, the bank kept dishonest and said, hey, you can't set up a new bank account without the approval of the board, and where's the minutes for that? And so we're back in front of you to get that done properly and appropriately. And you'll find that in the agenda and in the documentation thereof. So if you have any questions about how that's going to work or anything thereof, I'll be happy to help, or Daniel can answer as well.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, this is an ordinance. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to suspend the rule and take it to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Davidson to suspend the rule on Council Bill 74 and move it to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council Bill 074 is an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisville, establishing a new municipal division bank account for the receipts and dispersals of Show Me Courts program by the Harrisville Municipal Court, first year of Council Bill 074.
And roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 74 is approved and becomes ordinance 3563. Council Bill 75.
Council Bill 075 is an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisville, Missouri, amending sections 410.530, 700.770, and 700.780 of the Harrisville Municipal Code to reference the Harrisville Electric Service Policy, first year of Council Bill 075.
Thank you. Mr. Pollard. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Come to you tonight to put in place an electric department service policy. The previous policy...
Am I correct in saying it's 2001?
In 2001, there was a policy enacted by the electric department, and then it was placed in the municipal code under the sections that Steve just talked about. Key issues are the citizens and incoming residents have had trouble understanding exactly what's required. Chris and I met whenever I first came here. Chris asked me to look into that. I have. And working with Chris and his department and John Morris and in his department and with Alex Felzheim, we've figured out exactly what we feel like we need in the department. It may be lacking in some areas, and I'll come to you if that is the case. I would entertain any questions that you may have for me about the electric service policy, but there again, we're just taking it out of code and placing it in a document that electricians and citizens can reference fairly easily instead of having to look through our code to find it.
So will that be posted on the website then, so it's available to contractors and residents and people that need it?
Yes, ma'am.
Questions from members of the board for Mr. Pollard?
If it makes it easier, then I'd say it's a, if it makes it easier, I'd say it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Makes things clearer.
I would say that a big push from Chris is the reason that I went ahead and took it on.
Is that a motion, Alderman?
Absolutely. Make a motion to approve. You suspend the rules and go to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 75 and advance it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council Bill 075 is an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisville, Missouri, amending sections 410.530, 700.770, and 700.780 of the Harrisville Municipal Code to reference the Harrisville Electric Service Policy, second reading, Council Bill 075.
And a roll call again, please.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 75 is approved and becomes ordinance 3564. Council Bill 76.
Council Bill 076 is an ordinance to approve the minor plat of junior's addition being a replat of lots 5, 6, 7, and 8, block 17, Cummins and Sims addition between Elm Street and Pine Street and west of North King Avenue in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, first year of Council Bill 076.
Who's addressing that?
I didn't hear what you said.
Who's addressing Council Bill 76?
It might be Roger.
Roger.
Roger?
Rogers.
Is Roger in his office? Workaholic.
We keep him very busy.
He was there. You want to do the proclamation?
I have a question for the high school group. Is all, all your folks are here? Okay. We're going to go ahead and do your proclamation. We kind of skipped over it, but no, it's no problem, but we're going to go ahead and do it now. We'll make Roger wait. That'll teach ya. Please come to the podium.
You missed your chance.
Yep, he missed it.
And tell us who all is here. Hello, my name is Jeannie Waring. I'm the student council sponsor at Harrisonville High School. We have PR, junior PR representative Sophie Frazier. We have the executive council PR representative Sophia Sparks and Riley Minsky, who is the president, vice president of the sophomore class.
Very nice.
Well, we want to welcome you to the board. Don't they, don't they look sharp, guys and girls? So every year, we do a proclamation for the high school for Blue and White Day. And I'm going to read that to you, and then we'll do pictures, and we'll do pictures with masks and without masks, so everybody's happy. So, Blue and White Day, September 10th, 2021. Whereas the City of Harrisonville, the mayor, the Board of Aldermen, and the residents of this community wish to formally recognize the students and school faculty of our great city for displaying pride in themselves and their school and demonstrating the mighty Wildcat spirit by participating in Harrisonville Spirit Week. And whereas Wildcat spirit is built on the pride and involvement not only of the students and teachers, but by the entire community, including parents, business leaders, elected officials, public service personnel, and senior citizens. And whereas, the City of Harrisonville would like to join with the school faculty and student body in thanking everyone for celebrating homecoming 2021 and for displaying Wildcat pride. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen that you see seated behind me of the City of Harrisonville, I, Mayor Judy Bowman, do hereby proclaim Friday, September 10th, 2021, as Blue and White Day in the City of Harrisonville. And I urge all citizens, those in attendance and those watching, to observe and show their support by wearing blue and white during this day to honor our schools and our community. Congratulations. So it gives me great pleasure to present this to you all. It is yours. It is students. It is faculty, and the school cannot be as successful as it is without each and every one of you. So if you want to look towards Daniel? Mr. Crowe? Let's have reading of Council Bill 76. Mr. Mauer, did we read the council?
Okay.
All right. Mr. Crowe, the explanation.
Yes. If you turn to page 103, you'll see an aerial of the application from Mr. Osmer. On 107 is the minor plats for residential lots. You may recall that Mr. Osmer removed the abandoned, an abandoned church at that location. This is between Pine and Elm, and it's just west of King Avenue. He's now plating the tract into four single-family lots. Both the staff and the planning commission recommend approval. The only thing that I would need to mention is that in, there'll be two lots facing Elm, and there's no gravity sewer in front of them. So the Public Works Department has said that they would not have an objection to low-pressure grinder pump sewers being used at that location. There will also be two lots that are facing Pine. There, they may have a situation where the main, the sewer main that is there is maybe too shallow for the sewers. And so they may need to use grinder pump sewers, low-pressure grinder pump sewers there, which is just, you know, an oversized garbage disposal outside of each house. And so if that's necessary, they also have no objection to that. So anyway, we recommend approval. Mr. Osmer is sorry that he cannot be here, but his boss wants him at work.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, maybe. So that, that alley is vacated, right? It says vacated, so I'm taking it's vacated. The alley, there's, I'll tell you, there's an alley in the street. The alley was to the east, and it was, y'all vacated it. The street to the left, I can't, that is, would be right away for Marshall, Marshall Street. It's not vacated. That, I was asking, that was my next question. We talked about vacating that and came to the conclusion that if the people that bought the two western lots wanted to have it vacated, we would consider that. But we'd leave it to whoever bought those lots. And then, just curious, the grinder pumps, you call them, so are you, is that a live line to the city sewer, or are you just, are you just putting that in on the lateral at the house that can flow to the sewer? Or maybe you don't know that because of elevations? Well, it will be, you know, it will be put in the house. There's a private easement, which is one of the things that we have just, have added since we went to the planning commission. And so those laterals will flow up to Pine Street, and there they will deposit into the existing gravity main that's there. Yeah, I guess the question is, are those gravity laterals? Or I've seen where the live grinding line, the low-pressure line, goes all the way to the main. I was just curious. Yeah, it will go all the way to the main. All the way to the main. Yes.
Any other questions?
So the, the lots that are on the west side, will they have access into that alleyway? Is it usable space?
You know, there's kind of a creekway there now.
Okay.
So I doubt they would be.
So you don't think it's anything anybody's going to be driving through?
Yeah.
Further discussion, questions? It is an ordinance. Make a motion. Go ahead, Bill.
I was going to make a motion to suspend the rules and pass it to the second reading.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Mills with a second from Alderman Zaring to suspend the rule on Council Bill 76 and advance it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council Bill 076 is an ordinance to approve the minor plat of junior's addition being a replat of lots 5, 6, 7, and 8, block 17, Cummins and Sims addition between Elm Street and Pine Street and west of North King Avenue in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, second reading, Council Bill 076.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 76 is approved and becomes ordinance 3565. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for Jamore Farms. Mr. Crowe?
Yes. If you could, please turn to page 115 and 116. Take a look at the aerials on those pages in your packet. This application comes from Cynthia and Stan Warner. Mrs. Warner's family has the Jamore Farms, and they're disposing of the, of the property. The Jamore Farms has two tracts, and again, this is on the north side of Anaconda Road, across from Staying at Home and Church in Dwight. There's two Jamore tracks, Jamore Farms tracks. One is 25 acres, and it's in unincorporated Cass County. The county has given it ag zoning. They have one buyer for that who wants to put a rural residence on acreage. The tract that we're concerned with is the, is at this location, the last track in the city before you get into the county, and it's also part of the Jamore Farms. It's 14 acres. The Warners have another buyer that wants to buy it for the same purpose. They want to, they're buying his investment property and want to sell it for somebody to put a rural residence on that wants to live on acreage. The issue is, and the reason for the application to rezone it from M1 light industrial to ag is that rural residences are not a permitted use in the industrial zoning district. If you go into our industrial zoning districts, you'll see a lot of houses, but those are non, legal nonconforming uses. In this case, they would be built, someone would be, they would be marketing it to the lot to somebody who would want to build a new house, and that's not a permitted use. So in order to do that, you have to rezone it to either residential, or we think what would be more appropriate is ag. When we first looked at this, and we also asked Cool Evans to take a look at it, we advised the Warners that, you know, if this had been in the middle and completely surrounded by industrial zoning, we would not want a doned hole of ag surrounded by, by the industrial zoning, so we wouldn't be able to support it. But given that this tract is at the edge of the city, there's ag zoning, county ag zoning just to the west of it, that entire area on the north side of Anaconda Drive has been so piecemeal, parceled up into long, thin, piano-key lots. We think the likelihood of industrial, viable industrial use is going on, like have gone on the track south of Anaconda Road, we think the possibility of that is pretty, pretty limited. Also, the north 30%, 25, 30% of the, of this Jamore Farm tract is, is in the floodplain. So for those reasons, staff recommend an approval. Planning Commission unanimously recommend an approval. In this whole area, it's, the total is 14.75 acres. 14 acres of it is the Warner's property, the Jamore Farms. But if you look at down there in the southwest corner, there's a little 0.75 acre tract that is owned by Mr. Freeman Banks. It's in the name of his family, the Gladys Ferrand Trust. Mr. Banks, who lives there and plans to continue to live there, has signed on to the application and has, has approved the application being filed. He said he would much, personally, he would much rather live next to rural residences on both sides of them than industrial buildings. So that's why he's supportive of it. With that, be happy to answer any questions, and it is a public hearing.
Any questions before I open the public hearing?
Just one question, ma'am, ma'am. So this is like right on the edge of the city then, right? So, and they're going to market it as rural, but it's still going to be city property. We're not like rezoning that to county or anything, right?
Yeah, we're not deannexing.
Deannexing, okay.
Just rezoning.
Okay.
What is, what is the property directly to the east? That is an electrical contractor shop. And I've forgotten the name of the gentleman who has it. It's just kind of this, where he stores and stuff. He doesn't even have a street address. Thank you.
I'll open a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the board about the Jamore Farms Fair and Trust rezoning request, please step to the podium. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Roger. And we'll move on to Council Bill 77.
Council Bill 77 is an ordinance of the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, approving an application to rezone 14.75 acres from M1 light industrial zoning district to ag, H E ag zone, agricultural zoning district, which consists of 0.75 acres at 2608 Anaconda Road and 14 acres abutting it to the north and east and establishing an effective date thereof, first year of Council Bill 077.
All right, board, I entertain a motion. If you have no further questions, then Mr. Crowe?
Make a motion to suspend the rule. Move to second reading.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 77 and advance it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council Bill 077 is an ordinance of the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, approving an application to rezone 14.75 acres from M1 light industrial zoning district to H E agricultural zoning district, which consists of 0.75 acres at 2608 Anaconda Road and 14 acres abutting it to the north and to the east and establishing an effective date thereof, second reading, Council Bill 077.
Thank you. Another roll call.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 77 is approved and becomes ordinance 3566. Council Bill 78. Council Bill 78.
Council 078 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen at the city of Harrisville, Missouri, establishing chapter 680 of the Harrisville municipal code to enumerate rules and regulations for the use of the Lawrence Smith Memorial Airport. First, here is Council 078.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff.
Okay, so I've learned a lot about airports over the last two months. And I found out that Alderman Dorhoff knows everything about airports. And we, part of this started a few months back in discussion with the airport. The mayor was approached by someone about a committee, and so we went from that point, starting looking into operations airport, of course, especially because of the grant funds that are becoming available. And always being the new guy, you ask lots of questions, and when you ask lots of questions, you find things. And one of the things I found is the airport has never had any ordinance establishing the rules and regulations of the airport. And so we are, every three years, MoDOT comes out to do inspections of the airport. They most recently did here about two, three weeks ago. When we get that official report, I'll get you all a copy as well. But it seems like from the review that I did, it's the same deficiencies over and over again, same type of complaints over and over again, but there wasn't really any enforcement on the city side because number one, we didn't have an ordinance, and number two, there wasn't really any clear supervision that was going on. So as you know, we employ some different supervision, involve with that. Mike, that's our airport manager out there, is fantastic and does a really great job. And now he has us backing him on a lot of these things. But we needed to establish, establish the ordinance so that we can make everybody play by the same rules and everybody adhere to the same rules, and that we could also ensure that if there are any FAA complaints or MoDOT complaints, that the city can address those complaints because it's our airport. So I appreciate the mayor and Alderman Dorhoff and Alderman Mills painstakingly going through all of this with us to do, as well as Mike, that was a big part of that, and putting a lot of this together. And then for Steve, having, having to work on where do we put the ordinance at. But the ordinance that you have in front of you gives definitions and what those definitions are, and it gives the rules and the regulations plainly to everybody so that they know them. The leasing of hangars policy, so that we are ensuring that there's leasing. There's some things that you cannot by FAA law have in those hangars. And there's been instances over the past, Harrisonville is allowed, you know, like a burnt down bus or something like that to be in there, and you can't do that. The land lease for hangar construction, we have policies outlined on that. Through the fence, hangar lease. So some of you, you know, I heard the airport minded people kept saying that, you know, I'm through the fence, I'm thinking horses, you know, through the fence. And Alderman Dorhoff explained, well, that's essentially if somebody buys property next to the airport for the, and wants to use our airport for access, then that's through the fence. Because it's technically property owned next to the, to the airport, that's not the city's property, and someone gaining access that's not by the accesses that we have as a municipal airport. The FAA allows that, but from what everything they're explaining to us, it's very difficult to get accomplished. But we have to at least establish the rules for it. And this goes right along the lines that MoDOT and FAA require on their regulations. So that's what through the fence means. You know, I learned airport. Also, rules and regulations for the airport operations, ground operations, and then of course, airport safety. This'd get us a long ways down the road with a lot of the things that we need to make sure that we're enforcing and that we're also making sure are getting accomplished. And I know that MoDOT has applauded us getting this accomplished and getting this done. And so with that, if there's any questions, I'll do the best to answer them. If I can't answer them, Alderman Dorhoff will. And we will be happy to try to help you with those questions, but staff recommend approval.
I wanna echo what Mr. Ratliff said and thank Alderman Dorhoff and Alderman Mills for spending extra time trudging through a very much needed thing, having some specific things in writing to govern the operation of the airport. So anyone else on the board have questions of Mr. Ratliff or the Alderman that participated?
Madam Mayor, I was just gonna ask, was there, did we have a lot of complaints about things? Did we have a lot of issues out there that weren't being addressed?
The issues are from the FAA and their inspection that they do periodically. They do that every three years, and some of those things had been addressed, but in a temporary manner and not actually rectified. And because there was no, nothing in place to enforce the correction of those deficiencies, they just didn't get done. So this is just a much needed thing because we certainly want to comply with the FAA.
And those deficiencies, those were basically people that are using the hangars out there, things that they're doing.
Using hangars, having, having equipment too close to our runway, chemical spills. You're not supposed to, that's a big no-no. There's a lot of those regulations. The mayor, I think, has heard from every pilot out there over the past couple of months, and they really like Mike, the airport manager, and think he does a really good job. They think there's just a couple of pilots that are problematic, and they want to, they want us to address some of that. And part of the thing I always ask is, okay, where's the ordinance, where's the rules? And where's the ability to enforce it? And there wasn't anything in writing, and there wasn't any of the ordinance to give, you know, me the authority to tell someone out there, hey, you can't do that. Yeah, FAA says you can't, and MoDOT says you can't, but the city is the enforcer. And it's somewhat like the stormwater stuff. You know, the feds set the rules and they expect the cities to enforce it. And it's similar with, with the airport.
Any other questions of the board? All right, this is an ordinance, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to suspend the rule. Take it to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 78 and advance it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you, second reading.
Council 078 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisville, Missouri, establishing charters, chapter 680 of the Harrisville municipal code to enumerate rules and regulations of the use of Lawrence Smith Memorial Airport. Secretary of Council 078.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill 78 is approved and becomes ordinance 3567. Aldermen in committee reports, I'll start with Alderman Davidson.
I'm gonna put the chief on spot here for just a minute. He doesn't know. I believe he was in Florida the last meeting we had, and I understand that the city of Harrisonville and the police department got some recognition down there. So I would like for him, rather than me try to do, I'd like for him to speak on that recognition that we got while we were in Florida, so.
Perfect.
Chief?
Chief, thanks, Gary. Thanks, Gary.
Well, thank you, Alderman Davidson, but I don't know that it was recognition as much as it was an opportunity to share what we're doing here in Harrisonville with basically the rest of the world, because it's the International Police Chiefs Association. George Fries and I attended the International Association Chiefs of Police Date Conference, Day Drug Alcohol and Paired Driver Conference, attended by a little over 1,000. It was considerably lower this year due to COVID, but we got to present twice. We got to present once on our traction program, and then we got to be part of a discussion panel about our Harrisonville Carers Coalition. So great opportunity for the city of Harrisonville, and quite an honor, quite a feather in my cap to be able to present at such a prestigious conference. We were supposed to speak later, I was supposed to leave Friday for the annual conference, for the annual Police Chiefs Association. Attendance there would have been about 7,000. However, due to, it was supposed to be in New Orleans, due to a little hurricane, they have just made that virtual. We did participate in that as well, we just won't be going live. We did do a video presentation on the Harrisonville Carers Coalition and a little bit on traction.
I think he's down, I think he's downplaying it just a little bit, because obviously, small town Harrisonville, which, you know, 10,000 people, and the amount of recognition that we got internationally for what we've done, but more importantly, what the chief has done and what the city has done to bring recognition to the city, I think is very important. And, you know, they're looking at things that we are doing in the city of Harrisonville, not only nationwide, but internationally. So I think that's a big, a big thing for, and like I said, I think he's downplaying it more than it actually was. So, thank you, chief.
I agree, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Mills.
Thanks. Couple, appreciate the road department chipping seal and brush college. Nice job out there. The county did both the other two ends, and I think the city's looks much better. So, good job. And then I know we all saw those tall, Ward 1's had a lot of commercial activity. So we saw those pictures of those tall signs going down, which is a nice enhancement, beautification there at the, I shouldn't say marijuana place, but whatever.
Green light.
Green light, there you go. And of course, Culvers is going up on Commercial Street. Dollar General's open, Roberts Tire's got all their signs back and looking good. That's all cleaned up. The liquor store's got a pet thing going in. I wouldn't have taken the color choice on the new sushi place, but there's something happening there. Green lamp they're working on and got going in there. Esser's Liquor is gone, nice clean pad site there now. We could yell at MoDOT, there's one big pothole in front of Sutherland's on South Commercial, and we're growing two or three others, but there's a big one there, yell at MoDOT. The car wash is really getting spruced up next to the, you don't notice the car wash because of the sushi place, though, but. And then MoDOT, of course, in the end, that'll look really nice, but yeah, MoDOT's working on Mechanic Street. I did have one individual not complain, but he was woken up a few times in the night, because they are working in the night. So, but that'll be a nice, nice addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Turner?
I have nothing.
Alderman Milner?
I just wanted to thank Rodney for the extra signs at the four-way stop there on Independence with the start of school and the traffic being diverted down that way. So that was sure nice to see those, and I think it probably helped immensely. And kudos to the chief for actually getting to be on stage with George, because you know, in a few years, you're probably gonna look back and go, I knew him, as talented a young man as that is. So, good job, guys.
Alderman Dorhoff?
I have nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Reese?
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Alderman Franklin?
Yes, I wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday is the last junk in the trunk for the season. It starts at 4 o'clock in the afternoon and goes till 7 o'clock in the evening. And then also to remind you, on the September the 18th, our Paw Palooza fundraiser for the dog park and the animal shelter will start promptly, I believe, at 9 o'clock on Saturday, the 18th. So hope to see you there.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Zerring?
Yes, a couple of quick thanks and shout outs, really, Street Crew, Electric Crew, Parks Recreation, all of that area. Been out and about, seeing all kinds of good things, as everybody's been mentioning, going on. A lot of, a lot of activity, a lot of things happening out here. Same with EMS, police department. It's good to see people out, active, getting things done. But really wanted to give a special thanks to city administrator. Several times reached out to you over the last three weeks for help and assistance on things that people were hitting me up on, and you, I know the Electric Crew was involved as well in getting some things straightened out pretty quick, and actually made me look really good, so I appreciate that. I actually got a nice message back, I should have shared that with you, that said I was really great, so. But that was because you guys acted on it and got busy on it, so. And it actually went their way, so. So thanks, thanks to everybody.
Okay, we'll go to that famous city administrator then that makes people look good.
It's my job.
Just reminder about the vote of Alderman retreat on the 15th, 5 o'clock, Community Center. And the Law Cabin Festival will be coming up on the first and second. Also, the Fall Citywide Cleanup is scheduled for October 9th. One of the things that I wanted to point out to you all and that people ask you is, what's different this time is it's back out at the GFL location. It's where it's gonna, where it's gonna be conducted at on the 9th. That's good for us, for the city, less manpower and time that's involved with that, holding it at their facility here in Harrisonville. And so we're glad about that. And then there, the 16th of October is the South Grand River Watershed Alliance cleanup on the stream. And they're also doing the Fall Citywide Brush Drop Off. We moved that to the 5th and 6th. Was that first gonna be around the September the 18th? But we didn't think it was a good idea to have the Paw Palooza and that going on at the same time in the same place. And also with it being brush, a lot of people like the leaves and everything to be down and off before they start doing that, so it'll be on the 5th and 6th for this year. One of the things I want to point out in your report is when the water department or myself, when we're looking at a lot of these numbers, the industry standard on the water loss is, every city shouldn't be concerned if their water loss is under 15%. Whereas the industry standard is 15% water loss. Usually when I tell people that, they're, are you kidding me? No, that's the truth. That's 15%. Harrisonville just this last month, 2.39%. That's very low. I don't even like it being that high, but compared to the industry, we're much lower. And so likewise, when you look at the sewer side, it's not as pretty. So you've got a wastewater treatment facility that averages around 1.7 million gallons a day. And we rated in August, the average went up to 2.4 because we had days where we are at 4.7. And that is mainly because of INI infiltration, stormwater getting into our sewer system. And essentially, we're treating things in our plant that we shouldn't be treating. And so Carl's always gonna be after more money for manholes being sealed and sewer lines being sealed and smoke testing, because every public works director, every engineer goes nuts about that number. And so I just wanted to point that out to you. If you even look at the comparison of how many gallon, million gallons of water being sold last week, and then how many, million gallon being treated, there should be some correlation there, and it's woefully out of whack. And so that tells us that it's a stormwater issue and an INI issue. So that's some things I just wanted to point out on that as we move forward. You talked about the trees being down, Public Works Department, Electric Department's been very busy with trees that through these last few storms, it seemed like they wanted to fall over in the middle of everything. The City Lake and Lake Luna spillway rehabilitation projects, the good news is the 100% estimate is done. It's under budget on the engineer's estimate. So you always want your engineer to be the highest on their estimate and hope that your bidders come in below that. And that's out, be out for bid, and hopefully be getting bids on the 30th of September. And so we will be advising you all on that as well. MoDOT with the airport has asked us to stick with the runway project and not be doing the taxi lane project at the same time, because the reality of getting money for both is not there. for both is not there and we would rather go after the money for the, um...
Runway.
The runway. And so, that'll be, uh, things that we, um, I just want you all to know that in case you're like, why aren't we doing the hangar project? That's why. If MoDOT asks us to do it and they're the ones helping with the money, I will do it, um, to get it done. Uh, we had two new cadets come on, uh, sworn in this last Tuesday and so, welcome them to, uh, our Police Department. Some of you have asked, uh, before, um, uh, the chief has talked about for GM, G E M T, Chief Myler, uh, reemb- Medicaid reimbursement. There's a, project's been out there for the past few years and one of the things that we are doing with Harrisonville is, uh, as you know, Medicaid does not reimburse for our full cost of things. And the federal government now has a program that cities can go in and say, hey, we didn't get reimbursed enough, uh, for our Medicaid expenses and that we can apply for those funds. And so, uh, part of the things that Chief Myler's having to do is they wanna know stuff like, what's the square footage of your building? Uh, how much of it's used by the ambulance? How much is used by the fire department? Um, you know, what size are your bathrooms? What size? You know, it's, it's, gets down to the very big detail and he has to go through that entire process to get all of that stuff done. Uh, there's a company that we, uh, will be utilizing that will help us with those submissions, um, to the, uh, federal government on, on the Medicaid, uh, but it's a substantial program that we have a lot of hope that we'll see great dividends from. Uh, so that's what that G, G E M T means. Don't ask me what the long-term words are because I don't remember. We, we live in acronyms. Then the, um, uh, staff, uh, in the park with the, uh, Marler Work Allen Park, just want you all to know that Scott's Miracle Grow has donated all the topsoil for that project. Um, and that's been placed in. Select Ground Services is donating the irrigation system and free install, uh, for that. Uh, just the equipment alone's around $3,900. Uh, and then the fountain, uh, for the project will be done in-house by staff and possibly a, uh, a citizen who's the son of, uh, someone that was involved with the first fountain, uh, to, to do that project. Grant has one facility person on staff that used to work for, uh, a landscaping company and has built two water fountains. And so, we said, you're hired for that. But that, our cost would just essentially be the material, uh, because when we talked to other companies and got some pricing for a, a fountain, it was like $124,000 or something like that. For simply, I was choked. But anyway, uh, it'll be much cheaper if we have it and do it in-house. And of course, if we get this other resident to, to work with us as well, it'd be great. The carts are being picked up, uh, by GFL, uh, the, the, uh, NWS dumpsters as well, uh, and the carts, they started on the 26th. So, if you see people that have them up against their house, we keep telling people, please put them out there by the curb when, on your pickup because they're gonna pick them up in the process, uh, to do that. It's costing us $25 a cart to be picked up for those carts by GFL. And so, uh, you know, we'll, we'll apply the invoice to, um, NWS, but I'm not gonna hold my breath on that, so.
Will that be covered by the bond? Couldn't that be covered by the bond?
Yeah, but our concern is that all of that's getting dissolved and we don't even know if they'll, they'll stand behind it. We've already reached out to him. Steve's already written a letter to him and... And they're not responding.
So, why even require a bond if the bond company's not gonna stand behind the bond?
Because maybe the guy didn't pay his bill.
Well, that's, uh, that was my question was where I was, where I was going.
That's what we're thinking. And, and I think Steve is too. Steve?
Yep, the issue is that he originally posted a bond, but it is yet unclear. The bonding company is claiming that after the one year, he did not renew the bond. And we haven't found anything where, um, the city addressed that with him, nor we were ever notified that the bond, uh, was no longer in place. Um, have reached back to the bonding company, um, but waiting to find out if we end up short at all because we are holding his last payment and so, it, it may be a fight about nothing and so have not pressed it, uh, until we find out if we actually have a loss.
Okay, so can I ask a question then? Have we learned something here that we should maybe be notified, it be required that the bond company notify us if anybody, whoever was gonna have bonds with the city, that they immediately notify us if that bond goes into fault? That way we would be aware of it. Is that, I mean, I don't know if we did that in this contract with GFL, but that and any other bonds that we may have.
Or is there a way to certify it with everybody?
My understanding is the bond company should have notified. I mean, that's usually when you've got a bond, that bond company usually notifies the, the person that it was required for. So, that's what we can't find is there was any notification, uh, that had come to the city, um, for that. So, that's, that's to me very, uh, suspect why we didn't get notified.
Sorry for the interruption.
Uh, also the, uh, initial census reports have been coming out and Harrisonville is at 10,121, uh, in the census. We were at 10,019 in the 2010, so a 0.6% inter- uh, increase, uh, from that point, uh, to, uh, over the 10-year period. And of course, there's a lot of data that's involved with that. I'm not gonna read that off to you. But it is, it is out and about, uh, for the information. Walmart Distribution Center Refrigeration Project is, uh, hoping to be complete, uh, in October. Uh, it's a $4 million renovation project. Um, staff is, uh, also completed, um, to give you a little backstory, again, being the new guy, you ask lots of questions. And so, I was asking a lot of questions about Lake Harrisonville and, um, uh, we didn't es- essentially have anywhere that says that we, uh, were annexed around there. So, my concern was, uh, the Police Department enforcing things because the mayor had gotten a, uh, an email from a resident in that area because we had someone that was essentially on city property, um, with a backhoe and doing some stuff. And when the resident approached him and the guy cussed him out, uh, we figured, yeah, it's probably not a good thing going on. So, we, uh, I sent Chris up there to, to check him out and, um, there's some confusion with the, the gentleman on what he thought his rights were and we've had to look at everyone's rights there. I think we found some where someone got to water their cattle out of there in the early eighties and, uh, but that we think has expired. But we've been cleaning up a lot of that information, uh, and Steve is also giving us the, the letter saying that essentially because we own it, we can enforce things on our properties, uh, that are within the ordinance. And so, um, if you hear any, hear anything about that, we are on top of that. Uh, it's just interesting, all of the stacks of different paper and, uh, reading all of the deals. It's pretty interesting reading if you kinda wanna, you just like to, like to laugh, but it's pretty interesting. Um, the, um, essentially are also the, um, uh, permits, uh, Chris gave you guys an update on the permits about, uh, for the whole year. Last year was 400, we're already at 402 at the third. Uh, and then, uh, inspections, the total last year was 600, 1,621 and we're at, we're already at 1,543. And then, uh, code cases, we're at, uh, 419 right now and it was 685 in total and they actually ended up combining and consolidating, uh, a lot of the different ones. If they kept it the way it was last year, it'd probably triple that number, um, that was involved with that. And then, uh, for the total year construction valuation this year has thus far has been over 24 million. And the entire year last year was 18 and the year before that was 8.3. So, a lot more, uh, building going on, a lot more, um, uh, assets going on. And then another single-family home, home up on Burgess Drive, uh, single-family permit issued last week alone. Uh, then you'll be seeing some of the signs go up, uh, Jefferson Highway signs, um, Jennifer Reed with the Historical Society, Amanda Seitz, Scott Beck. Worked with Roger, uh, about some signage, Bill Shelton's putting up, uh, two restored murals commemorating, uh, the Jefferson, uh, Highway, uh, outside their, outside the building there at, at 1201 Independence. So, you'll be seeing, uh, a lot more of that activity. Then the, uh, September the 1st, we had the kickoff with Gould Evans, the Steering Committee and the Technical Committee for the Master Plan. It was a, a, a good meeting. Gould Evans did a good job about explaining, uh, different things to them. Uh, we'll be planning for public meetings that'll be coming up and so you'll be seeing a lot of those announced and pushed out through social media and, and the paper and, and all of those type of, uh, correspondences. Also, the, um, Downtown Square Historic Plan is 90% completed. Uh, the pictures, uh, from Jennifer Reed and the Historical Society, also, uh, David Atkinson, that helped us with some of the pictures for that document as well. And then, uh, it was mentioned by Alderman Mills a little bit, but we wanted to give, uh, kudos to Roger and the, uh, the BZA Board because you had two signs that were non-conforming up around that, the, um, dispensary and a part of that building permit was to, uh, bring one into conformity and eliminating the other, uh, as a part of that permit process. And so, if you've been, if you haven't been by there lately, it looks a whole lot better, uh, and a lot cleaner. And so, uh, wanted to commend Roger and the BCA Board for staying ahead on that, uh, and, and, and getting that accomplished because it looks a lot, lot cleaner through there. And with that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Yeah, Chris and Kate deserve an ad point too because they might have just procrastinated forever thinking out that sign and had them for...
Yeah, they stayed, they stayed after him.
Chris?
Thank you, Chris. You look like you wanna say something.
Uh, my part's easy. And on a building permit, they need to conform.
That's right.
It's really, it was Roger and Kate that, who had made it happen.
Yeah. Just working together. Yeah, that's awesome. Uh, you have your municipal court report in your packet. We have no media present with us this evening, so there will be no questions there. Um, I want to let you know that we have our September Town Hall meeting coming up, September 18th at 9:00 AM at the Harrisonville United Methodist Church. That presenters this time are going to be Chris Lang from the, uh, Cass Regional Medical Center. He's going to be giving updates on the new practitioners that are coming to provide services at the medical center. And he's also going to give a COVID update on the number of cases that they're having and the impact that that's having on the community. I've also, uh, invited the Health Department to be there to provide COVID vaccinations for anyone who happens to want one. And a very dear friend and very respectable physician in the community, Dr. Kevin Latnis from Cass Regional Medical Center will be there on hand to answer questions from anyone in the audience that has questions. So, um, my suggestion would be to come to the Town Hall meeting and then go home, change clothes, grab your pup and go out to the park for the Paw Palooza. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned. We'll be back in five minutes for work session.